That one, that one came in late, so I think he put it in the consent agenda just so that it got taken care of, otherwise it would normally be. But I think that's specifically a question for Mike on how he does it, because we've had both at different times. But I don't think there's a specific reason one way or the other that I'm aware of.
Anyone else? All right, we'll move on to consent items.
I'll make a motion, we accept consent items.
I'll second.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Wietrich?
Aye.
Zomalek?
Aye.
Item A, under new business, GCDC quarterly update.
As always, I want to start out by thanking you for your terrific support for us. During the last month or so, I've had three different times when I've been in contact with our legislature, and in each case, they've said, "Oh, you're from Green County," and they recognize us. It's just really nice to know that we're being recognized on a statewide basis, that they understand the things we're doing. And you're critical to that, and one of the main reasons why that happened. So I just thought I'd translate that back to you and tell you that we are being noticed statewide, and our legislature is really aware of some of the successes we've had. So to build on that, I want to talk about two main things. One, just a real quick thing on some of our housing projects, and you probably know this, but the two prison industry homes have both been sold. The contracts are in process right now, and they should be completed pretty soon. Rick Hunsaker was talking about that during our meeting yesterday. So those two houses are already sold, and that's another coup for us. Our White Apartments is finally done. We've finally got our funding taken care of and flowed through to Rick White, so he's sold the apartments. That's officially done and officially in the new ownership, and they're ready to move forward with that. So that's also been a positive. And just, I don't know if you know this, but just in case, Andy Rowland's apartments are fully rented, and because of that, he has committed completely to the new apartments in Scranton. He would have started them this year, but the lumber prices have doubled, so he will start them in the spring. And he's also made fairly firm commitments to go to Grand Junction and Peyton after that. So we have some pretty good things going on there. The most important thing I wanted to talk to you about, and please listen to this one, because this is really important, I'm trying to sell it as best I can. Region 12, because we've been real successful in our revolving loans for a long, long time, more successful than any other rural community or rural cog in the state, when the state got a significant amount of money from COVID relief to be distributed around the state, we got the biggest chunk of it of any cog in the state. We got $1.84 million to be used for business loans. And these business loans, and I think I might have mentioned it last time, because I've known about it for a while, if I didn't, I sure should have, these loans are really, really easy to get, way easier than our normal revolving loan funds. The first two years are 0% interest, the next eight years are 2% interest. There's no refusal letter from the bank required, there's no 10% investment equity from the person who's applying for it. The application is really simple, and it's pretty straightforward. What it is, is to stimulate growth, period. And there will never be any funding that's easier than this to get right now. To give you an example of how fast this is going, our normal loan review committee meetings that I'm part of, each month, we go over maybe one, maybe two loans at most. In October, our group went through six loans. Today, we had our meeting again, or five. Today, we had our meeting, we went through six. So that's 11 loans that we went through in the last two months, where we normally would go through two or three. So all I'm just trying to say is, please, as you're out and about and talking to people, let them know there's a significant amount of money still left. There's still probably, even with all those loans, they, most of them were fairly small. There's probably certainly over a million left in that fund, but there's probably been 700,000 or 800,000 already gone out of it. I'm just trying to, we do in Green County, we had three applications, two are still in process, one got refused. So I'm doing what we can to stimulate it, but please, as you're out, let anybody who has any interest in expansion or new business, you know, the type of uses are really flexible on, too. There's just literally almost no limitations. So like I said, you guys talk to a lot of people and are in contact with a lot of people, so please let them know that this is happening and available, and going kind of quick. They're coming out of the woodwork for these loans. So just wanted to mention that, because that's extremely important.
Ken?
Yeah.
Where would we send folks to get more information? Is that available?
You can send them to me. That'd be one way, or you can just send them right to Region 12, to Rick Hunsaker, either way.
Is there any online information anywhere?
Yes, yeah, if they want, if they want, I've got the application and all the write-up on it that I could send out to anybody who's interested.
Okay.
Just tell them, and we'll get it out to them immediately.
Okay.
When it's gone.
First time, first word.
Yeah, and they're coming. Like I said, 11 loans in two months, that's unheard of. We've never, never had that before. So please, please spread the word on that. Couple other things that I just wanted to mention, we were starting to do a veterans recruitment program again through Home Based Iowa. We kind of did that really good. We first became a Home Based Iowa, then it kind of slid back down again. We're going after that again now, and we're starting to put together a list of incentives and things to go after them. So I'm working with Jenny Showman and Mike Burl to get that rejuvenated, to help our workforce. So anyway, there's a bunch of other things. You've got them in my monthly status, and as always, thank you, thank you so much for your support.
Thank you.
Do we also approve the quarterly funding?
I'll move to approve the quarterly funding.
Second.
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Wietrich?
Aye.
Zomalek?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Item B, consider approval of Phase II facade grant for $8,667.28 for companion veterinarian clinic.
Can you talk about that?
If you were the, if you got anything to say on that, you can.
I guess I'd worked on that just a little bit, kind of, you know, just jumping into the middle of some of these things. So I think, what, Darian must be the Housing Facade Committee. We've reviewed these. I've got pictures before and after. I'm sure everybody's probably been by it one time or another, noticed the improvements. And something different about that particular building is the facade grant would qualify for each side that's on a right-of-way. So I think there's an alley, and then also the road that goes by there. So we had to kind of adjust some figures on the final application for that. So I think it's a good project, really improve the looks of that building.
And this is, yeah, this is part of the 50-50 project for facade improvements that we've had in place for some time. And yeah, I would echo that, that that building really looks good now.
Hmm.
Darian, do you know how many, or Chad, maybe you popped in, how many people have taken advantage of them?
Ooh, there's been a good number. Some of the projects aren't complete yet, I know that.
So I sent Nick an email yesterday, and he got back to me, and is it $300,000 a year for those, maybe? And I don't know where we're at with that, you know, on this fiscal year. I know there's maybe three, four of them that are in the file that I looked at. So I think there'd be some for the White House. I know there's an application for that in there, but as far as where we're at with the budget on that, I can't answer that, so.
In fact, I sent Chad a note today that there's another one out there. And I said, "Yeah, one of the first things we've got to do, and that's to figure out how much we've got left in this fiscal year that we can support." There've been some substantial funds spent there, but I'm not even guessing, but if I were to guess, I'd guess there's probably close to 100,000 left in there that hasn't been spent yet. Now, there's also some projects that haven't been completed, too, and I'm aware of that. So that's one of the things that we need to do in accounting on, and make sure where we are and what we've got committed to go out yet this year. Because as we get towards this time of year, why, and the one that came in to Chad today, or yesterday, I guess it was Chad, was for the Sierra Theater. And that one was enough, and I said, "Ooh, we've got to figure out, number one, they've got some other funding that's at risk if we can't do it with this project." So we need to figure out exactly where we are, so that we can advise them. They've got some other grant funds that are hinging on it, and they've also got some private donors that are willing to step up to the plate, which is really important. So I think we want to be able to do our part, whatever that is.
Absolutely.
If it goes into next year, it's probably not, it's easier, but it may still be doable yet this year to get it approved, too.
What an asset to the community. What's, Mike, our people said that it's been had entertainment there of some sort since 1884.
Yeah, yeah.
Continuously.
Yeah, and even some of the smaller projects have made some pretty major improvements out there. Yeah, I think it's been an excellent, excellent program.
Mm-hmm.
I'll make a motion, we approve it.
Second.
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Zomalek?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Item C, consider approval to hire Jamie Brenner as police patrol officer.
Good evening, everyone. This is Jamie Brenner. Jamie comes to us from the Ames area. She was raised in the Ames area. She graduated high school from Gilbert. So I think, I don't want to speak a lot for Jamie, but I think she started out kind of with a nursing path in mind, and she did a couple years of DMAC for pre-nursing and general education courses. She also did NIA-ACC in Mason City. She did some nursing classes up there as well. And at some point, I think she kind of shifted gears towards a career in law enforcement. So that's what brings her here tonight. Jamie will be full academy. That would start in early January. So I'd be sending her down to Camp Dodge for that. I would like to start Jamie on this coming Friday, the 13th. I told her not to worry about that.
[laughing]
It's just a date. It's just a date. But I'd like to start her at Patrol Grade One Union Contract 43618. And as you can see, she has a lot of backing with her tonight. She's a, she's a great person and has great people in her life. So we are excited and looking forward to getting her going. She'll be a great addition to our department.
Does she everything she wants to say?
Any questions? You kind of covered everything, so.
Any questions for me or concerns?
I have any questions?
I would move to approve hiring her.
I'd second it.
Aye.
Wietrich?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Mark, I have a hard. Welcome. Welcome.
Yes, welcome. This is for Mark, maybe, and/or Jamie. What do you think if the career academy here at the high school added a criminal justice classroom, Iowa Central, would that might mean anything, or?
You know, it's a good question. I mean, I would certainly look forward to that or welcome that. But it seems like I've heard some discussions on that in the past, but I don't know if it went very far. But I think that'd be a great thing.
If Gilbert had that, would that have stolen you away from nursing?
Um, there's not really any, I guess, classes for criminal justice when you're going through high school. That's what's really nice about the DMAC-Hunsaker Center in Ames, is because you can go there and get your CNA and your CPR. So I guess if you want to put that in the high school, that'd be pretty nice for upcoming seniors or juniors.
If DMAC would have had, well, you were kind of just thinking you were starting off in nursing anyway.
Right, yep.
Anyway, welcome.
Thank you. I'm excited to meet all of you individually, so.
Thank you.
It's a cop show.
Right.
Item D, consider first reading of ordinance providing for commercial cardboard collection fees.
Want to say anything, Dave?
Cycling, as a general, has lost money for quite a while, for a few years. And one of the ways that we've looked at not losing more than, we're losing probably about 30,000 a year. It's not an exact figure, but one of the ways to recover some of those costs is to start charging for cardboard for the commercial businesses. Back in the 80s, when the, in the 90s, when the cardboard recycling started, there was a good market for that. And so the city was able to always collect the cardboard for free, and then turn it into a recycling center and break even or make just a little bit of money. Markets have gone really bad, and so the last few years, we've been losing horribly in that. So we have some fees for commercial businesses, for a monthly fee, and then for picking up the cardboard, and that's what's in front of you tonight.
And a little bit with the cardboard, as well as Genesis was picking it up for free.
Yes.
And so that's changed a little bit of the dynamic since the city took it over, too, right?
Yes.
Well, added some expense for us, right?
Yes, we have to collect it, we have to take it to Carroll. We have the expense for fuel and vehicle maintenance and man-hours to get it there.
Yeah.
Dave, are you aware, is this what other committees are sort of going to towards?
Yes.
Probably, too.
Yes.
Dave has done a lot of work on this, and what he did, he separated the cardboard from the normal trash. So even though the commercial cardboard clients will be paying a fee that they've not paid before, it will still be less than what it would cost them to dispose of that cardboard in the normal waste. So I think that the structure of the thing is right, and it should induce the commercial users rather than just start to throw all that cardboard in the trash to continue to recycle it, and it'd be to their benefit to recycle it.
Any other questions? I'm just moving to approve right now.
First reading, okay. I move to place on the first reading.
Second.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Wietrich?
Aye.
Zomalek?
Aye.
Item E, consideration of approval of resolution amending request of reimbursement of eligible costs related to the COVID-19 public health emergency from the Iowa COVID-19 Government Relief Fund.
In August, you adopted a similar resolution, and the purpose of the resolution was to make claim for reimbursement of COVID-related expenses, and the city has come up with about 97,000 worth. And at that time, you used a resolution form that had come from the state. They now have changed that form. So about all we're doing is putting it out on a new resolution form. It now includes kind of a representation by the city that you're submitting the claim in accordance with federal and state guidance. That's really about the only difference. So we just have to readapt that resolution and submit that.
I'd move to approve that resolution.
I'll second.
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Zomalek?
Aye.
Wietrich?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Item F, consider approval of resolution of contract with Region 12 for administrative services for CDBG Upper Story Grant. And the Region 12 fee is a part of the grant.
You actually approved the grant contract at the last meeting or the one before, so you always enter into a contract with Region 12 then to administer it. That's the purpose of this.
I move to approve. Second.
Aye.
Wietrich?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Item G, change order number one, reconciliation of contract quantities and amounts to final as constructed levels for arch alley improvements.
So this is for the Arch Alley Project. All the work has been completed. This is basically just getting everything to the as constructed levels. The main differences are, we had an increase in modified subbase. We used that material to fill a coal chute that we found, or coal bin, that we found underneath the alley. And then we had the city staff remove and replace the decorative fence at the south end. Seemed more cost-effective than letting the contractor do it for the price he had on there. So the net effect of this change order is a decrease in contract amount of $3,265.20. And I would recommend approval of this change order.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Wietrich?
Aye.
Zomalek?
Aye.
Item H, pay request number two of $24,884.24 for arch alley improvements.
So this is the pay request for all the remaining work that they did. This is everything but retainage. Retainage is still held on this. I would recommend approval of this pay request. And yeah, sorry, that's it. It's basically, all these, these contracts, or these amounts reflect what was made in the change order and have been completed. So I would recommend approval.
I'll move to approve. Second.
Aye.
Wietrich?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Item I, certificate of substantial completion for arch alley improvements.
This is just a statement saying that the project is substantially complete and able to be used as designed. There were three punch items left to complete on this project as of the date that we issued this, on the second. Contractor informed me that those have all been completed. So I would recommend approval of the certificate of substantial completion. And then at the next council meeting, we will have a resolution of final acceptance to close out that project.
I'll move to approve.
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Zomalek?
Aye.
Wietrich?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Item J, change order number one for the shared use project of $1,350.24.
This is for an increase of $1,350.90. What it is for is out on East Lincoln Way, that portion of the project, the Phase III portion of the shared use path project. It was decided while we were doing construction to change that from a 6-inch C-mix concrete to an 8-inch M-mix. The 8 inches was due to the, some of the loads and materials that they get brought into Midland. While we were out there, they were talking that they had a 50-ton crane and 50,000-pound transformers coming in. So I just felt that a heavier section in that driveway was probably the best route to go, to make sure that we had the longevity and the stability on it. We changed it to an M-mix just to get a quicker cure time on it, so that we could do half and half to keep them access at all times. And it was, was decided to do that just so that we could turn that around in a short period of time and keep them access, to make sure that they had their trucks being in and out for emergencies.
I'd move to approve. Second.
Aye.
Wietrich?
Aye.
Zomalek?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Item K, pay request number four of $86,759.64 for shared use project.
This is for most work on the Phase III portion, East Lincoln Way. It was through November 2nd, so it does not include much of the concrete work, but it had a lot of the excavation and prep work for it, on the south side especially. So I would recommend approval of this pay request.
Move to approve. Second.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Wietrich?
Aye.
Zomalek?
Aye.
Change order number one of $13,420.24 for reconciliation of contract quantities and amounts to final and constructed levels for Chestnut Water Main Project.
Yep, so this is the project out here on Chestnut and in the alleys and up on Adams. This is a net increase of $13,420.2. Much of the increase is due to additional concrete curbing gutter that had to be removed and replaced, due to the placement of the water main and how it has to be laid out, and some of the locations where we had to relay storm sewer and sanitary sewer to meet DNR requirements. Where the water main ended up, it caused us to go around radiuses and stuff, which just ended up being more footage. We had some other minor decreases, but the net increases are mostly from the removals. I would recommend approval of the change order as presented.
I move to approve.
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Wietrich?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Item M, pay request number four of $7,600 for Chestnut Water Main Project.
This is for the Chestnut Water Main out here. All work completed. Only thing we're holding on this right now is retainage. All work has been completed. I would recommend payment of the estimate as presented.
I move to approve. Second.
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Wietrich?
Aye.
Zomalek?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Item N, certificate of substantial completion for Chestnut Water Main Project.
As I said, it was substantially complete on 9/30. They had a, we had included a punch list for that. Most of the items, or all of the items on the punch list are now complete. There's two remaining that are verified by There's two remaining that are verified by owner. Everything contractor-related has been completed. I would recommend approval of the substantial completion certificate as presented. This too will have probably everything resolved in the next two weeks, and so at the next meeting, we will have the resolution of final acceptance and project closeout on this.
Move to approve.
Second.
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Item O, consider resolution approving not to exceed 27,000 annual appropriation for rebate payments under Lincoln Ridge Estates Development Agreements.
This item and the four that follow them, there's five altogether. This is something you do every year about this time. You've entered into rebate development agreements over the years with developers, and in those, you agree to reimburse whatever tax they pay for the year or a certain percentage of it. Those agreements, with the advice of Bond Council, have a clause in them that say it's subject to annual appropriation, which means to really make it something you are legally authorized to pay, you have to make an appropriation for that amount. So, on the Lincoln Ridge Estates one, based on the lots that have been developed and those that are left to pay, your rebate will be about $27,000. So, it would require that you adopt a resolution appropriating not more than $27,000 to make that payment. This will be payable in the fiscal year starting July 1, 2021. Ask for that motion.
I'll move to approve. Second.
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Somaliq?
Aye.
Consider resolution approving not to exceed 3,000 annual appropriation for rebate payment under Briarwood Development Agreement.
Same thing, except it's Briarwood, and the amount is 3,000.
Move to approve. Second.
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Somaliq?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Q, consider resolution approving not to exceed 101,200 annual appropriation for rebate payments under Jefferson Hotel Group Development Agreement.
This you know better as cobblestone, so we just need a motion to approve this resolution.
Move to approve.
Second.
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Somaliq?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Item R, consider resolution approving annual appropriation not to exceed 19,000 for rebate payments under Michael and Miranda Wall Development Agreement.
I'd move to approve it. Second.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Somaliq?
Aye.
And S, consider resolution approving not to exceed 14,600 annual appropriation for rebate payments under Jefferson Veterinary Clinic Development Agreement.
Move to approve. Second.
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
And Somaliq?
Aye.
Under reports, Jim.
Not too much to report after all the stuff we went through. East Lincoln Way was making good progress, down to a couple of properties on the north side to place curb, and the driveways on the west end of the south side in front of the Freedom Rock and fairgrounds to put in. We'll see how the rain affects them, but hopefully, they're trying to get this pretty much completed by the end of this season, so they'll only have the Dobbin Deck Park phase to do in the spring. We have made a few changes on some minor areas. We had one spot where we eliminated some of the curb due to turning radiuses at the west end of the ANW, and then in front of another building, we had to adjust the location of it, of the curbing, just to make sure that we had access in and out. But they're minor, just quantity changes that we're dealing with as we went. Airport project is pretty much done for the season. They will start up in the spring as soon as weather allows.
All right, thank you.
Jim, I had a question. Is there, will there be a curb on the south side of Lincoln Way?
No.
That'll be basically what it looks like today?
Yep. Okay. Yep.
No.
Roxanne?
No report.
Chad? All right. Harry?
No report tonight.
Matt?
Let's see, a couple things came to my, I was, we heard about the fire department's big improvement last time. That was, that was good to hear, and I was just trying to learn a little bit more about what goes into that, and it sounds like at least a decent chunk of it was from Chad/Nick's Department of Building Inspection, so just kind of a nod to them and the work they're doing to kind of help with that, and kind of how we all, different departments, kind of have benefited each other, so kudos on that. And I was going to follow up on what Jim said with the East Lincoln Way project. I've been out there a few times and seen a lot of people using it so far. I don't know if Dave's been seeing folks out there, but it's great to see it being used already. Correct me if I'm wrong, but some of that curbing is going to help with drainage for those business owners as well, too, right?
It doesn't really affect the drainage.
It won't affect much, okay. It sounds like Mike had talked with Brad Riphagen with Trees Forever, starting to work on some of the plant material would be going into this planting area, so that'll really kind of soften that up with some landscaping out there, too. So, anyway, it's cool to see it cooking with the gas, and the folks are already using it before it's even completely done, so.
Yep. As far as this project goes, we didn't have any of the plantings or that in this, so they'll just put in black dirt and seed it for now.
Yeah.
But I think there are talkings about doing some type of plantings and improvements on that as the funds permit.
Yeah, I think that going to get the applicable trees to fit in there and maybe even transplant some of the native grasses we've got in some of our other city areas, it'll be basically little expense, so it sounds like the future. That's it.
Darren?
The library board met last night, and as has been said in their press release, with the high positivity rate, they have decided to modify their hours and their services again.
Sure. Mark? Hey?
I've been watching East Lincoln Way, too, obviously. It's kind of amazing how fast they got some of that done, but they got a lot of people working out there all the time. And they've actually been able to stay pretty calm with all the people rushing through way too fast. That's it.
All right. I'm just going to report, you know, with Governor's New Proclamation, we're going to be looking at, you know, possibly doing some Zoom options for our council meetings. Just here tonight, we're bordering close to that 25-person, which would definitely require a mask mandate, so just also give people the opportunity to be able to attend the meetings that would like to be at home with our COVID coming up, but those that want to attend and can and wear a mask and things like that, and those that want to attend through Zoom, we're going to try to make that an option for next meeting, I think. So, either way, but we will have to respect the Governor's Proclamation, so if we do hit 25, we will have to follow the proclamation. Other than that, that's all I got. All right. Thank you.